Gentlemen, like called this meeting to order. Welcome everybody here today for a special call. Board meeting here on May the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Anybody that's here in the courtroom and online today, pleased to have you. All right, our first order today would be county administrative items.
All right.
You, Mr. Tadlock.
All right, first item we have is the fiscal year twenty-six proposed budget. We have still got a lot of work to do on this, but I wanted to go ahead and start getting some meetings with the the board and at least start getting some some things on paper here. I go to the next slide. Um, I know this is a little hard to read, uh, but the the total budget for fiscal year twenty-six proposed budget total is forty-seven million, two hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars. Now, as requested, um, this does include, uh, for the most part, the department's request, but it does still exceed the revenue and dips into the, uh, undesigned fund balance, uh, as as proposed. This budget, as it stands right now, uh, only includes level funding of the school division, uh, budget as the school division's budget has been, has not been presented to the board supervisors, so we've not, uh, included their their request in into this budget proposal. I'll get into the undesigned fund balance a little bit further in the discussion. Uh, next slide. So as as noted, the proposed budget does include the request, for the most part, as submitted by the department. It does not include, uh, any salary increase, nor does it include any of the bonuses. And it also does not include any additional positions, uh, that were requested last year. Uh, it does include a proposed eight cent real estate tax increase. Um, and currently the tax rate is sixty-six cent, uh, per one hundred dollars. And, uh, as you can see at the bottom there, the tax rate remained the same for quite a few years. Uh, next slide. So as far as the estimated unassigned fund balance, um, we are estimating that or guesstimating, I guess would be a better, uh, term for it, about three million dollars. Now, if you looked at the fiscal year, uh, twenty-four audit number, that was approximately seven million dollars. So going into fiscal year twenty-four, and we we talked about this last, uh, last year about this time, we knew we were gonna go into the, uh, undesigned fund balance, uh, of about two point seven million dollars. So that that was, we knew that. What we did not know, uh, was at for the fiscal year twenty-four audit, and that was in the fiscal year twenty-four audit, um, and then coming into this year, the, uh, amount over, uh, for the school expenditures. What we also did not know was the unbudgeted supplemental appropriations in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for this fiscal year. Now, uh, with that, the three million dollars, if you you also will be getting a request of some fashion, uh, and it may be in the amount of one million dollars from the school division, that would drop the undesigned fund balance even more, um, and you're looking at about two million dollars. Plus or minus, uh, depending on what that specific request is. So as part of the other packet that you have today, I do have a, uh, revenue anticipation, uh, resolution for the board to consider and, approve so that, uh, when it does come time that we have to borrow money, then we can do so. Uh, the treasurer and I can move forward in in getting that. As approved by the board earlier, the health insurance, uh, is approximately sixty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-two, thirty-two dollar increase. Uh, we did see a four point three percent increase in the health insurance, and the board did pick up the cost associated with that. Um, and just keep in mind, that's based on the employees as of March, twenty twenty-five. Uh, that number fluctuates as the open enrollment, uh, comes and goes. Next slide. So as of right now, um, the budget requests are being evaluated. Uh, we have started sitting down with departments. Um, this is kind of, uh, a different route that we've that we're taking this year rather than, uh, previous years. Previously, the board has accepted, um, the proposed, uh, budget and with the department's request, and that has been advertised in the past, and then from there, we we make the the cuts from there. This year, uh, we are sitting down with the department and going through the budget to see where cost savings can be had. Uh, so we're in the process of doing that. The board just had a CIP request, uh, public hearing, and that totaled three point nine million dollars. Um, right now, uh, we are looking at, uh, two items related to that. Uh, the CIP vehicle request of a hundred fifty-five, seven sixty-five, a hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars, excuse me, uh, which would be for the, uh, for two sheriff's office vehicles and the CIP school and the amount of three hundred ninety thousand dollars for the well replacement. Those may need to be even reevaluated further, uh, depending on what, uh, is is looked at. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry, thank you. So, um, is there anything? Go back to the beginning, okay. Uh, yes, basically, yes, that's that's right. So, yes, the CIP, uh, items will be reevaluated. Uh, next slide. So our current debt service, uh, the amount is, uh, twenty-four million approximately, and that is about two million dollar payment each fiscal year. Uh, the regional radio system, uh, the debt service on that is approximately five point five million, and that is a an annual payment of about five hundred and seven thousand dollars annually. Next slide. Um, so actually, that was, I don't know why that got. There was a a table that should have been in that spot anyway, uh, that broke out the proposed fiscal year twenty-six, uh, estimates, and the the top three, of course, education was twenty-two million, two sixty-three, four thirty-eight, that's at forty-eight percent. The public safety, eight million, thirty-six thousand, two dollars, seventy-three cents, is seventeen percent of the budget. And, uh, health and welfare, four million, sixty-five thousand, one hundred and two dollars, is nine percent. We'll put these slides up on the, uh, the board docs, and we'll make sure that that slide is corrected before it's posted. Next slide. So we still have, uh, that the school division's, uh, presentation of their budget to the board. Um, we still need to have a public hearing on the school division's budget, and we still need to have the county budget public hearing. Um, so I with that, that was kind of the the last slide, it was a high-level overview. If the board wishes to, uh, go the about this a different way, uh, rather than the way we're proceeding, uh, please let me know, but my, uh, my route is that I'm sitting down with the department to see where we can, uh, have extra cost savings and bring that back to the board. Um, you do have on the table, and we'll post that on the webpage, uh, as well, the the budget as, uh, submitted by the department. I can try and answer any questions the board may have.
CIP projects that you are going to reevaluate, you're talking about the ones that are included in the proposed budget or the ones that are not?
No, we would be reevaluating the ones that we have tentatively, uh, placed in the the well and the two vehicles.
What's the deadline on the well?
I, do you, do you know the deadline on the well? Do you know, Jordan?
Uh, I believe it's March of I don't remember the exact day.
Would that be for completion of the well project or?
For the abandonment. Yeah. That that is the deadline, I I just don't remember the day.
We're getting some state help on that well, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Uh, they they were looking into any potential grants, but I don't believe there were were any that that could be fair.
State agency that condemned it, weren't they going to pitch in, help pay some on it? That was what was said on the public hearing.
No, I don't believe so, I think, uh, unless something else has changed, I don't believe so.
Weren't they once?
They they were looking into whether or not there were any DEQ funding opportunities, but I don't believe there's anything there.
Dr. Dr. Leslie, you don't know of any funding that you had that has been done before you took over or anything?
I am not aware of any, uh, I do know that there was a grant that, uh, was put into last year as I've followed your website. Did not repost it that brand here for us to apply for. Um, and I also know that our director of facilities, uh, did get the engineer, engineer, we came out next day or the other day, so we'll come back. But at some point, first thing we really needed was price, it didn't happen. So it took us some days after we got, yeah, we used time to get an interview out, actually, tell us all. Um, I know there are some earmarked funds. Possible we can come in under that, uh, if we come in over that, have to create additional. But as of right now, it has to be possible.
Yes, currently, there's a hundred and ten thousand dollars earmarked in the CIP fund for the the well. Uh, but that's the only funding that's been identified.
I'd like to review why it's being condemned. We got wells in this county and all over Northern Acton, fifty, sixty years old, they're not condemned. What's what's in this well, what's this case that made it up? They're saying it's condemned, I I want to know why.
Well, they condemned both of them, not just one, so that, and it was two, and it was two different reasons, if I remember correctly.
Right.
One was grouting, remember it was one of, because the 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 well for the new school, how old is that?
And another one is what's, you know, if it's an issue, what's the water quality? It's not having an impact on the water quality, then I don't, I don't quite understand it, the process.
I think they probably might ought to get somebody from DEQ to tell us those answers.
Then then you got the cost and all of it.
Dr. Leslie, you have a comment?
Right, so they are working on getting the cost. What they're looking into right now is whether those two wells have sort of a lateral connection, uh, underground, and that's going to get us a lot of information. I understand why the well abandoned, uh, this is the EPA thing, because there is contamination to the top of her, uh, based on one of those wells. That's my understanding of why, um, you know, with your questions, you know, well abandonment, so that abandonment would include and looking into whether or not there was a connection there, uh, to see if there was a bead between, and then also, I understand that if it if abandonment is fairly simple, if our pollution that essentially seals what's down there to be peeping into the top of her. Um, but as I stated, and I've just texted the director, I don't have a cost on that, and like I said, for us, that's step one, we didn't know if what was earmarked was enough money, not nearly enough money, but you know, so.
Did the school board decide to put in one well to to take care of both schools?
I don't believe they put the wells in, with my understanding, but I was not sure if my understanding was a
No, no, they were putting when the school was built, both of them. But my question, my question is, did the school board decide now to have one new well dug to take care of both schools? Because both wa- both wells have been condemned. So are we going to redo both wells or just put in one well?
Both schools. And I'm I'm understanding that that's other well to to service both.
But didn't both of them get condemned?
Believe they did.
We need to look into.
That's that's what we were told.
I understand, then both of them need to be replaced.
Yes, one sooner than the other.
I'm happily provided, I'm sorry, I don't, I my understanding is that one, that we can function off. I did not believe that we had to build well. That it was really the abandonment of the one well to take care of, whether or not they were cross-examining or being from that side. Uh, I can't get my director of facilities, but I can, I give you info, I can send it to you guys on our occasion.
All right, you were, let's see, you were supposed to have contacted the engineer to draw up some solution to this problem. I I don't know what the what the result on that has been so far, or even or even if they, even if the engineer has got back to you yet.
Yeah, so we did contact the engineer the day that we got the MO taken care of. He was down, it was difficult to get on their schedule, uh, it was quite a week out, so did make contact right away to get how people got it.
All right, I guess one thing we got to do, we we got to check it why both wells were condemned. We also need to see what the engineer comes up with as as a solution to the problem.
One well was how much money, hundred thousand dollars?
Every bit of that.
Looked like it's be on, we got three hundred ninety thousand. Some of those. Yeah, but didn't go well.
I could be completely wrong, but I thought they were gonna, their intentions were to put in a new well that was going to service both flows.
That was what I.
Elementary and middle high.
Yes, that's what I thought, yes, so too. We'll have to see what the engineer comes up with.
So we should have that information for you as soon as possible within a day or so, uh, I can send you guys the original letters after we from, uh, previously, and that would have that information, why, once, uh, then we should have the estimate, have the estimate of the fee we have the engineer out, that's because we'll get them out, um, I'm sure.
All right, thank you. All right, gentlemen, what other questions you have?
Looked like to me, you showed all money.
Uh, that's I would certainly like to have an all the meeting next week if that's, uh, if the board members are available. I would certainly like to, um, was it, what week was it? Okay. Okay.
I can do Monday before fourth, Tuesday, Wednesday, anytime.
If we could look at, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, that will give me time to sit down with some of these other departments.
So are the departments coming before us at all, or are you handling all that internally?
Well, we we've had some departments come to the board, uh, if there are other departments that you wish to, um, present further information, we can certainly have them come to the board. Just let me know what departments you wish to to come and speak.
Be kept up to speed on progress or like their own, those department.
I'm sorry.
I'd just like to be kept up to speed on your progress with those departments.
Sure.
Lack of progress.
Sure. No, and and what we'll do is, um, as we go through that, I'll start generating the, uh, for lack of a better term, the cut list, uh, for the the budget, so you'll have that ahead of time this year versus, uh, in previous years, um, that has come after the public hearing. So.
All right. Well, sure, Mr. Tadlock.
Um, I unless you have anything related to the the budget. Um, the next item is the revenue anticipation resolution that's in your packet. I would just ask the board to consider that resolution and, uh, move forward with that.
I'll say the resolution for revenue anticipation. What's your opinion on that, gentlemen?
Yeah, that's information, so it is one well that we are abandoning, they're not digging.
I think you're abandoning, if, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen. If I remember correctly, we're going to abandon two wells.
Probably over the course of time, but right now.
I I believe that was required by DEQ, might be wrong.
According to the director of, I'll I'll then that information, but I did this back and forth, I'm going to get that information. So I was aware that it was one, he is also saying it's one that were abandoning.
Maybe maybe right now.
But again, the two may be connected, and we don't have to dig anymore. He also updated me that he did not get the engineer there.
Not getting engineer?
Not get the engineer there, I understand there's been scheduling conflict.
Maybe they were trying to get here.
I'll have to have the engineer there before you can come up with any solution to the problem.
I'm questioning the three hundred ninety thousand dollars then, because I'm fairly sure that we originally were talking about replacing two wells.
Yes, wells with with.
And if if we're not, then
Also, there'll be a whole lot left.
A lot, four hundred thousand dollars is a lot to replace well. Okay, what size?
And I guess that's why we need the engineers' information, it's kind of hard to sit in and go by back and forth on what we recall in previous meetings and try to figure it out.
All right, how about the, how about the DEQ report when it was, uh, when it was presented? About the abandonment of the wells? Can can we pull that report?
We would have to get that report from the school division. I I don't know if, uh, Mr. Brand has that DEQ report from, uh, no, no, the report to abandon those wells.
Have to be top of that one.
Yeah, if you don't mind, forward that to us.
You're gonna have more infrastructure cost if you go with one well, it's gonna have to be ahead of all. You're piping along waves. But still, overall, it's gonna be much cheaper.
Cheaper on the new well.
Obviously, we're talking about this resolution.
Yeah, we got resolution on the table right now.
Wouldn't it be better to have it in place, hoping not to need it, the need of not having it in place?
That's the best thing, we approve this now, because, uh, if we need it, they can immediately go right to work, getting some money. If not, we go, there will be a holdup.
That's what I was thinking.
What was that, Mr. Plom?
That's what I was thinking, so I'll make that motion.
Second. All right, we got a motion and second, any of discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is against? All right, Mr. Tadlock, you have a motion to proceed.
All right, um, next item you have is the request from the school division on the, uh, transfer of monies from the building and site, uh, to the technology line item in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Do you mind come up, Dr. Leslie?
What was that, something big again?
The amount is one hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Yes, oh, my sorry.
Go ahead.
I know, we started talking, so I apologize, I didn't greet everyone. Um, so, yes, um, today we are requesting that transfer from the building and site account into technology. Um, that amount would allow the technology, uh, category to make it through the end of the year as far as the anticipated expenditures and payroll. Um, and that account, that money will be available, um, in the building and site account, because it was going to be, um, in excess that we would end the year with in that area.
All right, another question. How many other categories are going to be in the red?
So, uh, a number of them. Um, so please excuse me, my report is not in color. Um, so doing this transfer would keep us, um, in the black through May thirtieth. Um, however, by June and end of June, um, we would be having some accounts that would fall into the red. So, um, this is including using transfers to take the federal, state, and, um, federal cares accounts back to zero. In order to do that, we have to deduct that funding off of the instructional account, which would mean by the time we got to June thirtieth, we would be in a deficit of about five hundred thousand in that account. Um, and a deficit in, give me a second, I'm sorry, like I said, I don't have any color here. Um, that would be the only account, um, at that time, there is money in the other categories. So the overall deficit for us at the end of June would be about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So again, we have a deficit, a deficit of about five hundred thousand in that one category, but we have money in some of the other categories, that would be the overall amount. So unfortunately, however, if we took all the money that was in the other accounts and transferred it, and it still would not be enough, uh, by the end of June for us, um, to be where we needed to go. Um, and if if I might be able, um, that was one of the reasons that, um, we were hoping to request a supplemental appropriation, um, in the amount of, um, between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand dollars. And what that would do for the system is it would allow us to make sure that we were solvent through June thirtieth, and, um, also would give us, um, enough money to be able to start employing services through UHY or some other company in order to get the finances fixed. The finances are in 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 dire shape at the moment, um, and I don't really know what else we can do, um, but at this point, you know, without an appropriation, I cannot request those services because we don't have the money in the account. Um, the other thing that they will do is they will look into some of this reimbursement revenue, um, that has been discussed. I've gone through a lot of the reports, um, on the reimbursements, there are reimbursements that are yet to be filed, um, which can, you know, offset the overall, but UHY would be able to help with the reimbursements, help with the projections, and hopefully get us into a position where maybe we didn't have to come back and ask for that worst-case scenario that we presented last time. Um, but I won't say that there won't be another time that we would have to come back and ask for a supplemental appropriation to make it through. Uh, we have turned off superfluous spending, um, we had done that some time ago, but we do have regular bills, we have regular payroll, um, regular expenses that we just, we have to meet.
What are some of the things that you've actually turned off?
I couldn't hear you.
Some of the things you've actually turned off?
So a lot of times when we get closer to the end of the year, um, we have sort of wish lists and things that we want to buy, some supplies, um, things of that nature, so we're not doing any of that.
Not doing any of that.
I couldn't hear you, sir.
I see, not doing any of that.
Not at this time, no, so if it's a good and service that we have already received, we are obviously going to pay that bill if it's a
Yes, yeah.
Right, if it's a regular bill like
Yes.
copiers or telephones, right, those we have to include. Um, as you guys know, um, you know, we did start this fiscal year about eight hundred thousand dollars behind because of that amount that went from twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, so Um, so that was taken off the top. And then in addition to that, there are some other expenses that we had not planned for. Um, you know, the MOE being one of them, there was some discrepancy with, um, how the federal reimbursements were budgeted initially. Um, so in my, in my best attempt, you know, I, I would be requesting, but I felt could at least make a solvent through the thirtieth, get a team of experts in to tell us where we are, where we really are, if our projections are right. And, you know, instead of asking the county to lay out everything we think we would need to really come up with something that was straightforward. Um.
How much is UHY, uh, cost or contracted?
So they gave us just a few weeks, so it went to about mid-June because they felt that they could get us in a good position by then. It's about forty thousand.
You have nowhere in your budget that you can pull forty thousand?
No, sir, because in the overall budget, by June thirtieth, we will be in the red.
I hope your school board has realized what they've done.
When you say that UHY would be able to facilitate with some of the reimbursements, are you suggesting they would be able to, to locate some that you haven't found yet, or?
They can track down what's been requested, what hasn't been requested, if it's come in, where did it go? Uh, because that's a lot of the question. If it hasn't been requested, they can assist us with getting those out to make sure that they are requested for reimbursement. Uh, now, I don't know the time lag. I imagine it's already mid-May. Will those funds, if requested, now come in before the end of the fiscal year? I don't know the answer to that question, but I do understand since we spent them out that they would be put back into this fiscal year. And I can tell you for a fact, because I did some calculations, because I do a lot of that, um, that there is several hundred thousand dollars that I know that we have spent out for this year, that those reimbursements should be used to offset. Uh, and so that would bring that number down some uh, that we originally spoke about. But it's really getting. It's really getting someone who knows what they're doing to be able to go in and figure out where we are. As I track the reimbursements somewhere around February, it looks like federal reimbursements sort of fall off where we have, we're getting money in. Um, of course, we still get the state funding and what have you, but, um, that's where it is.
Gentlemen, I guess we all been a rock and a hard place right now.
We don't have any choice but to. To get someone in here to get that cleaned up. It costs us forty thousand dollars, they find a million. Help offset some of this stuff. That, that right there. We're spending that forty thousand, no.
That's what I, that's what I think. If we appropriate forty thousand so they can get started.
And, uh, you know, I don't know if y'all recall it or not, but I remember a number of, I don't know, maybe two million, three million or something that's supposed to come back in reimbursements. I don't know if they come back or not. Uh, I think that was some of the offer reimbursement. Is that you remember they were looking at some of those funds to pay for the playground. They wanted to spend it back out on the playground. If that money's setting out there and we don't do anything to recoup it, that right there, it could make a big difference if, even if it's a million dollars.
A lot of ways.
Uh, we need to look into this. Five hundred thousand dollars make a difference.
Well, you certainly right, Mr. Brand. I, I don't see a choice. We need to let UHY come on in here.
And we already voted on and made a motion to approve to have someone come in.
Right.
Get this finished. And then, and take care of it the rest of the year. And we need to do it. Get it done.
Now, it is possible, forty thousand was what they gave me through about mid-June, so they will assess at that point. So it is possible that it would exceed that moving beyond what they have given me so far. Um, but they did, you know, send me some hour estimates and rates and things, and we all came up with the same number. It's actually just under forty, and I'd be happy to share it with you.
All right. What if we were to score on and, uh, appropriate forty thousand, get them started? See how much money they can find. Hopefully they will have enough money. Hopefully UHY will find enough money, so if there's any offset cost, that'll be covered. If not, we'll just have to reassess that when the time comes. But that would get you started now.
Sure, and if, if we could get to, you know, the first couple of weeks of June to have that, you know, we, we're not going to probably get those reimbursements back to make those June thirty bills. So my, my guess is that we will be, you know, we will be here requesting, um, but at least we could have another set of eyes looking on those exact numbers to see where we fall.
What is your best guess, best guess of how much the reimbursements are outstanding?
How much? I'm sorry.
How much in reimbursements outstanding that you know about at the moment?
So it's a difficult question because, um, the federal reimbursements are on fifteen months, not on twelve months. So these numbers that I've pulled today for what are outstanding on some of these, um, reimbursements that are outstanding, they are over a fifteen month period. So potentially they could bleed into next year. Does that make sense?
It does, but explain to me why it's done like that. Why is it on fifteen months?
That would be a question for the federal government. I don't know. When they give it to us, it's on a fifteen month. It goes through September, and you can use a reimburse, like I can spend into September of twenty twenty-five, and I can use that same amount. It's just, it's a little different where we do a fiscal year for twelve months. Um. But you can, you can spend out of the following year's school budget, which is really different to still get it on that year's budget, which is very different than how most other things work, where you have to put that reimbursement in the same year. Um, so that is different. So what I calculated this morning was in the neighborhood of about seven hundred thousand dollars. And I can tell you that, um, at least four hundred and seventy of that I know came out. You know, I know, I know it's a one-to-one. I know that that should be reimbursed.
Did you locate those reimbursements or who's, who's getting you that information?
So our, um, director of, um, federal grants and, uh, I can't think of her entire title, um, was able to pull some of those reports to look at what I asked her to get me the spend downs, and then I pulled the, so it's, it is complicated, and I will just tell you, I'm learning school finance um, to this level. Um, so she was able to pull some that had spend downs, but some of them are federal grants, and some of them are state grants. And state grants, I can tell you, because I did the budget, come off the budget from the top, so they're not allocated separately. So there's a lot of wiggle work, um, in there to figure that out. So what I did is she essentially gave me everything. I put it all together, and then I had to go in and say, okay, these are monies that were in our initial appropriations, and these are monies that are not to get my best estimate.
Hold that number one more time, seven hundred?
It's about seven hundred thousand. At seven oh three six seventy-two. Now, again, that could be monies that we spend out July, August, September, though, also into twenty-five, so it doesn't necessarily all go or have to go in this fiscal year. Uh, so I just want to put that out, because if we put it on this year, then we would, of course, be behind in the following year, right? Um.
To what category, excuse me, uh, to what category would that, if the board does the supplemental appropriation in the amount of forty thousand, would that need to go to?
That is a really good question. I believe, without looking at the chart of accounts, I'm ninety-nine percent that sure that in the chart of accounts, our fiscal services are billed out of the admin and health category. So that would be where we would pay it from. But I will, I will have to check the chart of account. Miss Pecani, Dr. Pecani. Okay, it's in admin and health.
Thank you.
I think, uh, I think I'll make a motion to approve forty thousand to cover UHY's cost. And appropriate that into the admin health category for school system.
Okay.
All right, a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
We'll see if you can get UHY on in there to help you as quick as possible.
Thank you. We very much appreciate it.
All right, you got a supplemental, you got a transfer of funds?
Uh, yes, sir, it is the transfer of funds, um.
I know.
Again, from building.
Started out on it, we got sidetracked.
That's okay. Uh, from building and site, so it's, uh, category sixty-six hundred, amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars to technology, sixty-eight hundred, obviously in that same amount.
Gentleman, motion to approve?
Well, that's, that's all right, Pio.
I've got a, got a motion and second.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All against? There you go, ma'am.
We thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Thank you for coming and congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Keep us informed too.
Yes, sir, and I'll send y'all the bill stuff.
All right, thank you. Hi. When you want to sit, next meeting date? Tuesday? When? Got no idea, Mr. Tadlock? Board members got no idea?
I can do any day, but, uh, Wednesday's best for me, but, but I can do any day.
Yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday.
Wednesday, early or late?
Early.
Doesn't matter.
What about noon?
Sam? The last week, May, I won't. Well, next week, next week, I'm good. Next week's good, good, yeah, good next week. All right.
You want to start, uh, two o'clock? Three o'clock, one o'clock? Two, one, two, three?
Two.
Get it over with?
One. It's like.
One, Mr. Plom?
I said one, go for everybody. But two, don't make me into.
Tadlock?
No, Wednesday at one is fine. Uh, I'll double check the court schedule, make sure there are no conflicts, but.
All right, so Wednesday would be, what date is that?
Twenty-first.
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 That's correct, yes, sir.
So we'll, we'll carry over to May the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five at one P M.
One P M.
All right, um. Tadlock, you have anything else you need?
Not at this time, no, sir.
Um. We're gonna need to bring any, any of these agencies in. Sit down, discuss what they want. And because this budget's gonna be very tight.
Very tight.
That's up, up to the board, I can.
Dude, let's, let's get through our meeting this week.
All right.
Sorry.
All right. Nothing else?
That's all I have right now.
I entertain a motion carryover to May the twenty-first at one P, one P M.
Motion carryover to May twenty-first till, uh, one P M.
All right, have a second.
But.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.